He's supposed to be here.
I don't know, I might kill him all day.
Just probably any of them.
There are some of your stuffs.
Hello, Robert.
How are you doing today?
Good.
Six o'clock is the time we call together to order the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission. If we will, I'll ask Brother Johnny Wick to give them the session and Eric Gilman to give the session. All the same, please.
We bow in place. Our God and our Father, we humbly bow before you at this time to thank you for the many blessings that we've received from you each day. Father, we're thankful for this city that we live in, Mount Pleasant. We pray your blessings be with those that live within its boundaries. Father, we pray that you will be with us as a planning commission, that you would give us the wisdom to make the decisions that would most benefit the people that live within the city here. Father, we pray that you go with us through this meeting, guard God and direct our steps. In the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect what we do, how enough attendance for a forum. Out of number three, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
I have a motion on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four, approval of meetings, minutes of prior meeting, September tenth, two thousand nineteen.
I make a motion we approve those.
Motion being made.
Aye, second.
And second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, plan approvals.
There are none.
Number six, resounding requests.
There are none.
Number seven, identification requests.
Say, there are none.
Number eight, site plan approval requests. I'll leave this to you, Robert.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everybody present tonight, members of the night. Tonight we have, of course, a, um, it's a site plan identified as PC one zero zero eight one nine, um, and it's a, being presented tonight by members, representatives of owner, Axe Family Church, uh, they are present, uh, here tonight, and they're requesting that a site plan review take place on the property located on the corner of South Cross Bridges and Gray Lane. Of course, this property is situated specifically on that corner there, and it's legally recorded, um, as the agenda shows. Purpose of the site plan is for future development of the site for construction of a church, um, and that's what's being presented here tonight. Site plan came through. We've done our review, uh, we returned comments to the engineer and the owner, and y'all got copies of those as well, the plans that y'all have in your packet for the revised plans, and if you can turn to C dash one point one, we'll start there when we'll be in the comments. One of our concerns, one of the first concerns, uh, was that the, um, culprit, um, indicated at the top of your plan, on the original plan that you all went through, and they have changed that, um, it now goes all the way through from one side to the other. Initially, engineer stayed on the previous plan, or the previous, the original submittal that the, uh, is debatable whether it was needed or not, but we called that to intention and he didn't address that. So, now we have a call, completely from one side to the other. The comments, I don't know if you have any of those, if you have your comments available handy there? They should be in your packet.
Are you preparing?
I am, yes. So, comments three and four, uh, as you see, uh, three was asking if signage was proposed. When the revisions were returned, there's no signage that has been proposed, to my knowledge. And then, um, the radius, we still haven't got any confirmation or any response from the engineer in reference to if the radius is going to accommodate turning movements underneath the canopy, and that's specifically speaking to number four. Uh, those were not addressed or not answered, nor replied to. You're going there, following the comment sheet, um, the entry, uh, number six, the entry on the revised plan, um, has been indicated and made ad accessible, or shown ad accessible in the plan. Number seven, eight, and nine, questions and concerns arose when we seen the plan and, and noticed the dumpster location on the, of course, you don't see a dumpster on this plan, um, but there was a dumpster located on the original submittal. Questions arose, um, in reference to possibly being hindrance to turning movements of dump trucks, uh, where it's positioned at, and then, of course, number eight, there was no dumpster screening detail that was indicated on the plan. Number nine, uh, suggestion was made to locate the dumpster pad, uh, where it was more accessible and not hinder the turning movements, and the, as you see on the revised version, dumpster's completely been removed from the site altogether. So, that was an answer to our comments, I guess, from the engineer. Um, we're going down to the, um, number ten, comment ten. We asked that the engineer make a case for surface treatments, uh, where the advantage, advantage of the community and what measure will be taken to reduce the dust erosion, et cetera, specifically speaking to the gravel parking area that's laid out on the site plan that you see. Uh, we just asked that the engineer make the case for, uh, how that could be controlled in the future. Uh, there was no, no response to that. And, uh, also, number eleven, parking stalls and drive aisles, um, need to be compliant with eleven point two Arizona ordinance, and on a gravel parking lot, there's no indication of any type of delineation of parking spaces. Uh, there has been a note added, if you look down, um, close to the bottom of the page on the right corner, you'll see parking summary, so the note was added to attest that parking would meet the requirements, but no visible indication of that. And, um, number twelve, comment, uh, all street parking area and driveway shovel constructed of concrete, that's called out specifically in Arizona ordinance, discussed that several times.
Right.
And twelve was not, uh, replied to, um, and then number thirteen, notation needed for setback distances, um, that was replied to, shown on the revised drawing. And then, of course, fourteen, um, we asked just clarification of the submittal, was it revision, or is it new application? This is indeed a new application. The original application and approval that came before this board expired, so by our rules, um, upon that expiration, it's expired, exactly what it means, so this is a new site plan, new application, before the boards and that. And number fifteen, we requested that update parking calculations to current requirements, and the box indicated below that I just pointed out meets our requirements, um, as far as, um, next state. And, um, so that was updated, um, and if we'll go over to, in our comments section, I think there's just a couple more that I want to talk to the board about real quick. I'll find the page in just a second, so if you go to L dash one, to the landscape plan, and both your plans and the comments, you'll see it indicated, so. Okay, the, the scale of the landscaping that was shown, uh, around the entrance area and along the buffer, the scale is just not, it wasn't readable, um, so we're not for sure if the, um, plannings meet the criteria. Um, he did add a note, um, on the very bottom indicating that the plans would meet the criteria, but was not reviewable at the scale they were submitted, and we asked that to be changed, but no response, um, other than adding the table, or adding the note, um, on the bottom of the sheet there, indicating that, um, buffer type, and then also, um, the note that said that east boundary buffer plannings and boundary fencing are compliant with Mount Pleasant zoning, land used title fourteen thirty-two forty-nine hundred, that's, that's an old note from our old zoning ordinance, that's right. Um, so buffer type B was, um, added, and that runs along the back of the property, um, in direction of the school, so you get the property there. But, other than what you see on the table and what is presented on the drawing, uh, at that scale, it is just not reviewable, assuring us that it does meet the standard.
Did, did you not get a full-size sheet of that?
We did get a full-size sheet, yes. We just asked, we asked for clarification.
I'm understanding, misunderstanding the comment, this.
Let me just, let me just say, this is Mr. Chip Rhodes, engineer, so, uh, let me...
I want to make sure you get a big enough sheet.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a big enough sheet, it was reviewed, thanks for the question, so, um, and you, you might be able to speak to this.
Yeah, you have to say a lot of things here.
Um, the engineer has showed up, Mr. Chip Rhodes is present, so, that was, that was our comments that we had. Um, they, they were sent to the engineer and to the owner, uh, as well, and I just wanted to go with comments that we submitted to the engineer, um, and make you aware of the changes on the plan, the physical set that, uh, you have in front of you, and that was reviewed prior to coming to the meeting, so. The engineer and the owner are here, um, with any questions, or I can answer any questions, maybe Will's here as well.
So, Robert, did you say this, the, we've got the, uh, the buffer type B reference here, and then the note down at the bottom, and that's the incorrect, that's our old?
Forty-nine hundred is actually, you know, uh, that's, that's text from old zoning ordinance.
Right.
That's correct, yes. But the buffer B is actually text from the new zoning ordinance.
Right, so I guess there just needs to be clarification as to...
That's correct, yes.
Which ordinance we're referring to.
Yes, and we are referring to the new ordinance.
Correct.
So, so explain to me on the, the gravel parking lot and stuff, that...
Um, well, section in our zoning text, um, requires that any parking, um, any driveways, um, that's governed under this zoning text, has to be paved, concrete, or, uh, brick pavers, or other suitable material, um, as seen through the text.
Right.
Um, so it's very specific, it's a short little section in there, uh, I can't call the section, but it's a very short little section, but it is very specific, we've all seen it, so, um, gravel parking area, uh, is what's shown on the plans, as you see, the, the concrete area is the entrance, the driveway underneath the canopy, and the two handicap parking spots. Um, they are indicating on the plans that there are curb bumpers, bumper stops, which are concrete at each parking space, and I assume that's how Mr. Chip Rhodes came up with the parking arrangement to meet the criteria of a zoning text, is by how many bumper stops that you have. Um, but the, the majority of the parking area is gravel. And our other concern was, uh, well, outside of what the zoning text says, our other concern was, we just asked for a, a plan, or a plan of action, or a way that the dust and, um, dust that is naturally going to emit from a gravel parking lot is going to be controlled, how it will affect the community, um, we just asked for a case to be made. That was not submitted back to us as part of the revision, but I'm sure, um, they have done their homework, and they might have an answer to that this evening, uh, present, but it, there was no talk or discussion practically.
Yep, you go ahead and address it.
Do we have anybody who, I mean, who's allowed to go ahead?
Uh, there's nobody that signed it, I believe.
My third law, if I use third witness.
Uh, yes, sir, yes.
Well, I'll have a seat here until he says it's okay.
No, go ahead, okay, I'm finished, yeah, I was just coming to help.
Thanks. Uh, yes, I'm Chip Rhodes, with Rhodes Engineering, here to speak on behalf of Axe Family Church. Uh, we did, I thought, prepare a written response to his, his letter, we provided a cover letter with his comments and written responses to each item. I don't know if that got separated from your plans or what, but sometime, I don't always deliver them myself, sometimes the cover letter with the responses don't get dripped, attached with the drawings, apparently, he never got it, but we did answer each question. I do want to, uh, answer the one about the dust surface, we had provided a written answer about the church's planning to add on in the near future. This is something they explained a year ago when they first came with the first request, is they're asking for gravel, and because it's not going to be long before they're going to take a chunk of that space up with another building, and then they wanted to be able to provide the permanent paved parking when they expand in the future, so this is, they're going to see this as a couple-step process. They don't want to waste, they're on very limited funds trying to get this off the ground and get it started, and they don't want to waste any funds. Is that correct? This is, I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm trying to relay what the church is telling me, and we didn't ignore that question, so it sounded like we did, and I'm like, oh, gosh, bad, I'm going to get up there and get lynched, and, uh, so I apologize for that, but each item did have a written response to it, and some of these items appeared unaddressed. For example, the thing on the parking, we didn't stripe the parking because we're leaving it as gravel at this time, but I did provide, uh, you know, those concrete bumpers where you could see where each car would go so we could count. I did have a striping plan at one point where we actually painted on there, uh, and I've seen, you know, paint on gravel locks, you can see where the space is, and we can certainly do that. I had it on there and was asked to take it off, this was an internal thing with an employee, we were debating about how to show it, but we decided best to just leave the bumpers and leave it open since we're not requesting paving at this time, but the church's desire is to pave later when they have the addition added, so they're not trying to get it out permanently of the, or, city's requirement, uh, we're asking for, uh, approval of this site, this, this first phase, so we can get started without a, uh, expense being wasted. In, in their view, you know, you don't want to pave it and then have it covered and wasted, so we would pave everything at a later time, but for the initial plan, this does provide adequate parking, it's a good plan. Uh, we did look at the, the comment he made earlier about the, uh, the radius of turn, we did check that, make sure cars can flow in and out of there properly, and the way we've left the parking lot is, uh, so cars can get in and out. Did remove the dumpster, uh, because that was an issue of conflict, and the church is wanting to explain to you, they're going to provide their own garbage service and haul off their own trash, so, uh, the church made a request that we remove the dumpster, and so we did. So, I wanted to explain those items. There might be others that come up and other questions you still have, but I just wanted to say we didn't ignore the comments, and I do apologize that he didn't get the, the letter that went with the plans, and I don't know who dropped the ball somewhere on our side, me or Phil or one of my guys, but I do apologize for that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only problem I have is with this is the gravel parking lot. We're going to open ourselves up here with this, that we have, that we have put on everybody else here, and, you know, I, I'm glad you've been able to build and elevate here, but, uh, I, I just think the allowing the gravel parking lot will become an issue for the city down the road, and, um, you know, we would, myself, I think we need to see some kind of timeline on this parking lot, though, because, you know, I, I understand this is a, you know, a startup church and got very small membership, stuff like that, I understand that, but, you know, I'm here on behalf of the city, looking out for the city's interest, I just, I feel like we're going to open ourselves up something here if we approve this without some kind of stipulation on this parking lot, so.
Can I recommend you have the city attorney here and you have the professional planner here come in on that, and that I also have concerns about not having a dumpster, because it's required, isn't it? I mean, you can't not have pickup.
Or services?
Yeah, I think it's required in the ordinance.
I think that's correct.
If you're the city, then we have to provide.
Have to provide the trash service.
But that's just my gut thoughts, but I, you do have plenty of people here that have...
I did not receive, uh, which is typical for Mr. Rhodes, and maybe I, um, my favorite partner, I probably should have called him and just said, hey, where's your le- letter? Because he usually sends me a letter with, uh, and I didn't get that with the plan, so that, that probably answered a lot of those comments that, that, you know, I just, uh, talked, talked about, and I think he did, um, address those at least, but, um, you know, the, um, you know, I'm of the opinion, you know, it's working the board besides...
I just have, I just have concerns for the city. I do have a vote on this.
I do want to address the question y'all asked me earlier about the duck, the, how I was going to address the dustless surface, or the dust, or something on the parking, and, uh, we did research that, and, uh, there is the double bituminous treatment, surface treatment, that is a T dot spec that we would be willing to have on that parking lot, that would keep the, you know, the dust down, and that was part of the response.
I'm like a dumb bomb.
Yeah, it's a double bituminous surface treatment is what it's called. So, so I wanted to say, we weren't just leaving it just gravel, we were treating it to, to do that.
Myself, that's, that's, that's my only concern with it and stuff, is, is gravel parking lot. I mean, Corey, could you follow with this?
Um, well, I can, I know y'all are sick of hearing this speech, but, um, you know, the planning commission's job to apply the site plan to the zoning ordinance as it is today, um, if it requires paving, or, I hadn't found that section, I think it might actually be in design review.
Surfacing.
The surfacing, you need to follow those surfacing requirements. Um, we haven't talked about this, but it sounds like they're asking for kind of a phased project, but that's not what's on the, that's not what's presented to you today, it's the gravel parking lot, correct? Um, so you need to follow, you need to apply your zoning ordinance, if you can think of a way to require it in stages, or something like that, that might be something a planning commission can consider, uh, but you need to follow what you have in front of you now.
Okay. Can I share an item related to that?
I'd like to say something too.
Okay, related to that comment, uh, in Spring Hill, a similar situation to church, uh, they gave us a three-year time period to have that requirement met, so they gave the church time to get it built, and then they were committed to doing what was done, but they did extend the time, and in this case, that might be something that would be a, a solution, but I don't know.
At the time, it was what's being presented right now.
Right.
Am I correct on this?
And you can, you know, you can approve with conditions, um, but, or, you know...
Well, we haven't been presenting any type of time guideline or anything right now, but, uh, I, I understand what you're saying. Go ahead, Robert.
I, I was just waiting on, if you needed any information from me, I, I heard Mr. Jones and, uh, speak, that he, he would like to say something, so when the board is finished with me.
That's fine, I'm fine with that.
And, and he's representative of church, and so...
Thank you, yeah, my name is Mark Johnson, I'm associate pastor at Axe Family Church, and, yeah, we understand that the ordinance for the gravel driveway is there, it wasn't there when we came through the first time, and then as we presented it, um, I guess that's when it became known to us, that the ordinance had changed since last year when this was approved. Um, we are currently, that location, in terms of impact to the citizenry, it, it's by a ball field, and right across from a soybean field, and down below us is all open grass, so, there's a parking lot, um, right, right around the corner here by the grill, and right across from the Methodist Church, that's, that's used pretty much every day. Uh, that church, for our church parking lot will only be used twice a week, once on Sunday and then once on Wednesday night. So, um, you know, I understand that the ordinance is the ordinance, and I, I really would like for us, uh, to, for you guys to consider, could we, um, go back and make a little bit of adjustment and say that within three years, if we haven't expanded, because it's a cost thing, right, the monies that we've raised, everything that we have, uh, that building plan is all we can afford, uh, everything we've collected from the banks, um, three of the pastors that are there, we are bivocational, and so we work outside of being pastors, we've, uh, actually signed off on the loan, so our personal finances are at risk if that building, um, were to go into foreclosure, uh, which, I'm just saying that to tell you, there's no chance that we're going to come in here and, you know, six, eight months or a year, we're going to leave, right? That's not going to happen. We're to come in, we want to be here a hundred years, uh, we want to come alongside Mount Pleasant, um, people and, and start ministering and get involved, we don't want to just be a church that we come in on Sunday and we go home. We want to be active in the community, right? We, we come to the barbecue festival, um, we've helped out with the, um, Christmas break, we want to do that again, we want to be a part of the Easter program that you guys do, right? So, so as a church, uh, what I'm putting before you is, you know, all, take all those things into consideration, I know we got to follow the law, right, what the ordinance says, and so I guess what I'm saying is if we could find a way to compromise on spending the money on that parking lot now, and give us a chance to get built, grow our, our membership, and then either we build on it, or in three years, we pave it, right? And if you guys can see your way to kind of making that allowance, I think that would help us and get us going. If we don't make that allowance and we have to build or pave that parking lot, um, it is going to be a real struggle for us to, to actually build and, and be in the community. Uh, so, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. So, how much, how much, how much it would be anticipated of that, the, the parking lot as shown, how much of that would be eliminated with the new, with your next phase? And would there be the possibility of, um, going in with just the binder coat?
Yeah, I think the, uh, suggestion that Chip has presented is a very viable option, we didn't look at that. Um, as far as the next build, we don't know yet, right? Uh, we're a small church, uh, we're hoping that once we get into that facility, we can grow, that'll tell us how much we can build or not build. Uh, if, if we can grow, we'll build down and then, you know, we'll pave it all out. If we can't grow, then at some point, we're going to, we're going to pave that, right? We'll just go ahead and pave it. So, to me, yeah, if we need to do something like put a coat on it to keep the dust down, um, I, I don't see a problem with that at all.
Yeah, I mean, any, anytime you do a phased project, you're going to have some measure of sunk cost.
Yep.
Regardless.
Yep.
There's, there's no way around it. Um, so, you know, and in fact, I've done it with a, with a parking lot, and, you know, it was going to be temporary, but it had to be paved, so you can go in with the binder coat, you're not putting the expensive top coat on it, you may have to go with a thicker, uh, binder on it.
Like a tolerant shield.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a bituminous substance, just like a paved lot, uh, so there, there would be a, you know, savings on that sunk cost, and still I think need to meet your... That's just like, to me, that's, that's a big concern, because there's always going to be an exception, so.
Yeah, if we had the money on it, honestly, we would do it, but, but we actually got it approved last time, uh, and had to actually undo everything because, uh, the board asked us to do some things along the back wall, the fencing and the bushes, um, that we couldn't afford, so we had to walk away totally and then redo everything, and we had to shrink the building, have some of the stuff we wanted, um, just to get us where we are, in order to, to get that buffer between us and the ball field, and so... And so, you know, now, we've kind of got that, we were successful in getting that back down where we needed it, and now, the zoning rules changed while we were doing that, went from, you can have the gravel parking lot, to now, you can't. So, we got, we're kind of stuck. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Would there, would there be the possibility, is there a cost differential between concrete, enough concrete, the difference in the, the concrete drive, switching that over to an asphalt surface, refuting some of that funding?
Honestly, I don't know. We'd have to go look at it. We'd have to talk to the builder. I mean, this is what we kind of came up with now, so.
I'm just looking for options.
Yeah, no, I know you are. Yeah.
I understand.
That's, that's a nice area down there, and, you know, with schools, ball fields, as you brought up and stuff, and, you know, we just had a business open three or four months ago, the state storage and everything, and, you know, like I say, the only thing, to draw back on this whole thing is the gravel parking lot and stuff with this area. And like I say, I understand what you're trying to do, and everything here and the downsides and everything, but I just, I just think it's become an issue with the city down the road. If we, if we allow this, own this, with the ordinance, the way they are, and, you know, unless you come back and submit, like Eric was saying, you know, some kind of a plan, you know, with, you know, that would work, that would work for you. That's my only problem.
So, I think we're getting confused, because what we're talking about some of it's not before you. So, if you want to, if you want to consider like a phased project, or, you know, putting a different surface on the park, on the parking lot, which is not on the plan, you could defer it and let them go back through Will and Robert's offices to see if they present something that would meet the zoning ordinance as it's handed to you. So, we're not talking about all these different exceptions that their engineer hasn't considered, and they don't know the cost of, and things like that, yet.
Okay, let me make a motion with defer of this. I give them the opportunity then to, to look into options for that, and not really pass this plan, I have it for free. And give them the opportunity, give the engineer the opportunity to come back and look for something that will pass or.
I got a motion to submit it, defer, site plan approved.
Now, the first, not saying no, it's just.
Yeah, I understand.
Backstepping a little bit.
I have a second. We'll have a roll call, though, will we?
Ms. Granberry? Ms. McGranberry?
I don't know, because I think that, you know, the end of this, both calls are telling me, and I think that we'll have to stay on the stage, so.
You abstaining? Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Keltner?
Yes.
Four votes? Nothing is a favorable vote on the deferring it.
And you're deferring until they resubmit?
Right.
That's the time.
Or indefinitely.
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that, then? Does the deferral and go back through the process then, go back into the same timelines that, that you have, or is that a, like you've got a calendar and a schedule, when we can come in and present things? So, does that mean we got to wait and get this to you by, let's see, it'd be next Tuesday, or four weeks from now, whatever it is? You know what I'm saying? The timing.
They deferred it until, specifically, until it's resubmitted.
Okay.
But, he's asking.
But, I don't think I can resubmit any time. I guess that's my question.
Yes, sir. And if you can get a cemental within.
Two weeks.
Two weeks of the day?
Of the date of the meet, of the next meeting? That should give us enough time.
Two weeks of the day of the next meeting.
So, by the resubmit, deadline for, in a matter of hours, we should talk again?
Yes. So, you still have a little ways out.
Yeah.
You can still resubmit and get on to the.
Okay. I have time to get on to the next one, not miss a whole nother minute.
That's correct. That's correct, yes, sir.
That's what I wanted.
Can I say something, too? You also need to check on the dumpsters, because I appreciate the law, fulfilling when we brought all of them, you live in a city, and you've got to have a dumpster. We have to pick it up. And I'm not sure that's what we have, so you may want to check on that, too, while you resubmit.
Okay. Okay, sure. I assume that's in the ordinance, is right?
Mine is, uh, in Arizona.
City ordinance.
City ordinance.
City ordinance, yeah.
Okay, so.
City ordinance, municipal claim.
Okay. We'll check on that, then. Okay, sure.
But, for your clarification, you can present school from the November.
Okay.
Since I said it, I'll get November.
Perfect, thank you.
Number nine, old business?
None.
And you ten, the other business?
None.
Number eleven, board and staff comments?
None, sure.
Didn't have any citizen comments at twelve?
No, sure, you're not.
Thirteen, the German. I hear a motion. Second, I have a motion and a second, the German.
So, get your, how do y'all decide on what's going to be the basis?
Well, we, this is what we were presenting today, and we were just trying to explain why we wanted the gravel.
But, here's what, here's what I'm saying, you're going to fade it out, so I want to see it on the plan. So, give us projection, give us a ground frame, uh, next vibration, you have said. And that way, we can show the square, and then, go, it's ten years from the day it was created. Now, the kid did, but I recall the matter, and I, I, or it's, it was greater, and it was, because it's stepped in faith.
They were just trying, they were just trying to explain why they wanted to do gravel. They didn't ask me to do it.
But, I mean, they have to step to the outskirts. Yeah, you discuss that, and they're thinking, you know, that would, that wouldn't, that would, that would, I'm just afraid of that.
I don't like him, this year. Steve.
Yeah.